Good evening, everyone. Tonight is Tuesday, December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. I'd like to welcome you to the Pittsburgh City Council. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. As that councillor Squalia, please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. For all.
We lost you there councillor Squalia.
Oh.
All right. Councillor, do we have you back?
I can hear you.
All right. Next, we have a roll call. Madam Clerk, if you could please conduct the roll call.
The following councillors have logged in and are present at tonight's meeting. President Kusmeric, councillor Boishman, councillor Kuchar, councillor Gina Tally, councillor Fleming, councillor Schultz, councillor Squalia, councillor Van Hazinga, councillor Walsh, and councillor Zarela.
Thank you, madam clerk. And councillor Zarela with a motion for suspension of the rules.
Move suspension of any rules of this body or of our parliamentary authority that are in conflict with either the remote participation format or with the state guidelines on remote participation during the COVID-19 pandemic.
Second.
This by roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Councillor Squalia. Please unmute. Thank you. Councillor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
Councillor Walsh?
Yes.
Councillor Zarela?
Yes.
President Kusmeric?
Yes.
Councillor Boishman?
Yes.
Councillor Kuchar?
Yes.
Councillor Gina Tally?
Yes.
Councillor Fleming?
Yes.
Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
That is unanimous.
And public forum. The public had been advised to contact the city clerk's office today by noon regarding any comments of not more than two minutes, and none were brought to our attention. With that, we'll now hear a report from the Committee on Records. Councillor Squalia.
We have reviewed the records, and they appear to be in order.
Do I have a motion?
A motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second to approve the report from the Committee on Records, which will take by unanimous consent unless there is any objection. Seeing no objection, it is so moved. Next, we'll, if there's no objection, we'll hear a report from the Appointments Committee, which met earlier this evening and took up the following matters. We have reappointments. Animal Control Officer term to expire November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three of Mr. Todd Pickett. We had the Pittsburgh Council on Aging. These were all for, nope, the term to expire November first, two thousand and twenty-two of Mr. James Craigan. Term to expire November first, two thousand and twenty-two of Ms. Annie Di Martino. Term to expire March first, two thousand and twenty-three of Ms. Margaret Padavano. Term to expire November first, two thousand and twenty-three of Mr. William Walsh, and term to expire September first of two thousand and twenty-three of Ms. Josephine Wood. We have three new appointments for permanent reserve police officers for the city of Pittsburgh. Frisario Z. Ramos, Cedric A. Robinson, and Angelo J. Ramos Jr. Two new appointments as permanent full-time firefighters for the city of Pittsburgh. Timothy R. Downey and Robert E. Nealan. And we also had a one singular appointment for the Associate Member of the Human Rights Commission, term to expire December first, two thousand and twenty-one of Ms. Mariah A. Pridgen. Those were all unanimous.
Mr. President, can we pull permanent full-time firefighters for a separate vote?
Is that in the form of a motion? Councillor, would you also exclude the Pittsburgh Council on Aging after recusing?
I was, I was just going to ask that.
Yes, I will.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept a report from the Appointments Committee excluding the Council on Aging and the permanent full-time firefighters for the city of Pittsburgh. I have a motion and second, unless there is any objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing no objection. It is those, the committee report is adopted excluding those two particular areas. Next, we have the Pittsburgh, we'll take the Pittsburgh Council on Aging again because of a relationship to Mr. James Craigan, who serves on my campaign committee. Myself and ask Vice President Walsh to take over. I will mute my camera and audio.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have five persons who are up for terms on the Pittsburgh Council on Aging. And, and madam clerk, can we take all of these at the same time unless there's an objection by, by councillors to take anyone separately? Okay. Mr. James Craigan, term to expire November first, two thousand and twenty-two. Ms. Annie Di Martino, term to expire November first, two thousand and twenty-two. Ms. Margaret Padavano, term to expire March first, two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. William Walsh, term to expire November first, two thousand and twenty-three. And Ms. Josephine Wood, term to expire September first, two thousand and twenty-three.
Motion to approve the appointments?
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve. And unless there is any dissent, I will take this by unanimous consent if that is acceptable, madam clerk?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Is there any nays? I don't see any objections, so we'll go ahead and take that by unanimous consent. All five people are approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Walsh, and we'll now take the new appointments, permanent reserve, permanent full-time firefighters for the city of Pittsburgh, Timothy R. Downey and Robert E. Nealan, there now before this body.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
On a motion, on a motion.
And second to approve, speaking on the motion councillor Boishman.
Speaking on the motion. I asked to pull this positions out because I feel very strongly that throughout the city, we had some layoffs. And back in, back in October, before October, when all this started, we were told that we had to hire two permanent firefighters back in October because we had to meet the commitment of the contract we have with the FEMA. And I, when I called up Washington, they said that was absolutely right, that we met the, we met our commitment after we hired those two. And now we're saying to hire two more. And the reason why I'm, I'm saying something about it, when people from the department at the DPW retire, we don't replace them. I got records here showing that increasing staffing level, outstanding service request has increased from one hundred and fifty-one on March first to four hundred and thirty-eight on August eighth. These are roads conditions that our roads are in. These are not repaving them. It's just asking people to fix the roads so cars can drive on them without damaging their cars. It says here, we haven't hired, and it says here on nine-twenty, we have to date, three hundred and seventy-six wrecked apart holes and work that needs to be done, not even done on nine, on nine-twenty. But we don't hire the DPW workers. We haven't replaced the DPW workers. We're down over eleven percent in their budget in twenty-one, twenty-one budget. So how can we sit here and tell the residents that we're going to hire two more firemen? But the conditions of the roads are terrible. People are getting flat tires. Mr. Ron Maxwell on Oak Hill Road got a flat tire, cost him over three hundred dollars. Tom Donley on Chestnut Street a year ago cost him over seven hundred dollars. A guy, Mr. Boucher on St. Joseph's Avenue had to have his whole front end replaced. This is all costing money to have people's cars. And I talk this way because on my way to church one day in front of Pry Automobile, a guy lost his front end, and he had to call a tow truck, and he couldn't go to work. We're not replacing DPW, and they're a public service. They're for safety too, and this is my argument. I'm not here to try to get the merit, I think, but right now on the books, on the books in the city of Pittsburgh that we know of, that we know of, we have over five hundred requests to fix the roads, not pave them, just fix the potholes. Fix the potholes. They don't have the manpower. They're down by over eleven percent. Right? They only get fifteen guys. They need at least seven more. But every time the fire department wants somebody, they get them, and I don't understand it because this is a public safety. Because I know a lot of you think I'm very negative. But you know what? I went down, I bought some tires for my truck. It cost me a thousand dollars. The guy says, you know, your rim is bent. You said, what'd you hit, a pothole? I said, yep, I hit a pothole. I rented them. So I don't understand why we're not hiring DPW because they're a public safety tool. So how can we sit here as a city council, say we're looking at the wall being a city, when we're not hiring DPW to fix the roads and to fix the sidewalks or whatever else needs to be fixed? They don't have enough employees. Simple. They can't do the work that they have. They don't have enough. So I don't know how we can sit here and justify hiring two more new firemen and not replace anybody on the DPW. We haven't replaced anybody. Oh, I let somebody else talk, and then I'll come back if I have to rebuttal that one. Thank you.
Next, we have councillor Gina Tally. The floor is yours.
First of all, we're not hiring two new firefighters. We're replacing two firefighters that retired. And the statement made earlier about we don't replace retiring DPW workers is not correct. We certainly do. This budget that we just passed was because of COVID. COVID, COVID, COVID. Multiple departments got reductions through attrition, meaning those who retired were not replaced. First time in six years we've done that because there was no pandemic until now. We reduced staffing in police. We reduced staffing in fire. We reduced staffing in DPW. Equitable. So the statement that we don't replace retiring DPW workers is false, other than this instance, because of a loss of hundreds of thousands in revenue. These are not adding to the DP, the firefighter ranks. This is replacing people who have left. Different. And I'm sorry, everybody, I'm a broken record because every two weeks we have to hear from one of us that the roads are in bad shape, as if this is a come-to-Jesus realization. We all know that. What the councillor never talks about is how do you pay for these things? Because that's the hard part. So what we're going to do is we're going to penalize the fire department and knock them down a couple more pegs to bring an additional, to bring two DPW workers back. And all of those potholes are going to get fixed as a result. The bottom line is this is about equity. We're not going to add bodies to one of those departments if none of the rest do, and that's where the premise is false. We're not adding people to fire. We're replacing them. They were already reduced through attrition like the other two. So I know he's going to rebut this, but there's nothing to rebut because that's the fact. Now, I can look at the DPW report and read all the problems we have in this city. But again, living in the world of Realville, how do you pay for it? No one can answer that question. So I can sit here for an hour and complain about things that are obvious to us all and not give any solutions. That's easy to do, and that's what gets people angry, which is why this is being done again and again, to make people angry. You mean you guys are adding firefighters that don't need it, which is not true? The NFPAA, the national standard for firefighters, is seventeen per shift. The reductions we made in the budget go below that. So let's stop pitting fire against police and against DPW. These are replacements for retirements. And if there were DPW retirements tomorrow, they would be replaced. I'm sorry I'm yelling, everybody, but this is a broken record every meeting. And I gotta listen to stories about someone who lost a tire. I sympathize with them, but it's not because of what we're talking about. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll add too, and I think this is an important point. Yes, there was one retire, one retirement by Richie Liberatore, who was our FEMA director. But the other is filling the seat of someone who passed away in line of duty after a long battle of cancer. So I, I think that's an important distinction too. That was a seat that was, that remained open for some time within the ranks of our Pittsburgh Fire Department. Eddie Suarez was the longtime police, Fire Union President. And, you know, I don't think we, just don't fill a position when someone passes away after serving our city. I think we do them the honor and the dignity of honoring their commitment to this city by appointing the next generation of firefighters. With that,
Mr. President.
I, I have councillor Zarela. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to note that the question before us is not a budgetary one. We are not appropriating any money for these two positions. They are going to be paid out of the existing approved budget. We are only voting on whether the two individuals who have been named to the positions are appropriate to fill the positions. But the positions will exist whether we vote yea or nay tonight. Thank you.
That's a wonderful point councillor Zarela, and I have one last person on the speakers list. So councillor Kuchar, I would just ask, because councillor Zarela just reminded us, all of our comments should be with regards to the, the appointments before us, not the, the budgetary commitments associated with them.
Actually, my, my comments, both mirrored councillor Gina Tally and councillor Zarela, I withdraw my time.
Thank you. Councillor Boishman, if you have anything pertaining to the, the two candidates before us, not the budgetary commitment before us.
Yeah, but the question I had when I talked to somebody up in the office, and I don't want to say any names, that I was under the impression that we weren't going to replace the two retirees, that we were going to replace the other two people because, because of the matter, we had to meet the requirements. And once we met the requirements, that was the end of it. And when we come back and we say that we hired a DPW, that's not so, and I got records to prove it.
Councillor, I, I, well, I believe you're still correct. There was, there is attrition in the fire department. It was not these retirements. It was other retirements. So they, they still have lost positions. There's still a net negative in the number of positions from where we started the year to where we are now. So they have already, they have already lost positions to attrition, and these are additional positions beyond there that need to be refilled.
So we're not at seventy-eight firemen right now, Mr. Chair?
Don't have the number off the top of my head councillor.
Well, because I thought we were at seventy-eight as of October thirty-first.
Don't have the number with me.
Move the question?
I have a motion and second to approve the permanent full-time firefighters for the city of Pittsburgh, if Timothy R. Downey and Robert E. Nealan. We'll do this by roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Councillor Squalia.
Yay.
Councillor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
Councillor Walsh?
Yes.
Councillor Zarela?
Yes.
President Kusmeric?
Yes.
Councillor Boishman?
I'm going to vote no on this time.
Councillor Kuchar?
Yes.
Councillor Gina Tally?
Yes.
Councillor Fleming?
Yes.
Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
That is nine to one.
I'll make the clarification. We started the fiscal year at eighty-one firefighters, now down to seventy-eight. Next, communications from His Honor, the Mayor. We have a number of appointment letters for the, all for the zoning board. And they're for Mr. Joseph Byrne, term to expire January first, two thousand and twenty-two. Ms. Lauren L. McNamara, term to expire January first, two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Michael McLaughlin, term to expire January first, two thousand and twenty-four. And Ms. Jean Hudson, as an associate member, term to expire June first, two thousand and twenty-one. Those all stand referred to the Appointments Committee. Next, we have Finance Committee, meeting of December eighth, two thousand and twenty. Councillor Gina Tally.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance met last week, December eighth, and took up the following. Two thirty-eight, twenty was in order to accept a gift from Digital Federal Credit Union for seventy-five hundred dollars to support the police department's efforts in providing quality programs to our city's youth. Two thirty-nine, twenty was a grant acceptance for fifteen thousand five hundred dollars from the MEMA Emergency Management Performance to purchase vehicle extracation equipment for the tech rescue team and underwater communications for the dive team. Two forty dash twenty was, and, and two forty, two forty dash twenty was a order to transfer from within prior year CDVG funding to the current year forty-five Crocker Field account. That was adopted. Two forty-one, twenty, and two forty, forty-two, twenty, and two forty-three, twenty all have to do with the creating an accessible playground at Park Hill Park, accepting grants for the park grant from this, from the state Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs for four hundred thousand dollars. And then the grant from the San Pol Community Group for forty thousand sixty-four dollars and sixty-five cents. And then a resolution to file and accept the grant with and from the Commonwealth of Mass Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs related to the site amenities of Park Hill Park as outlined in the enclosed order. All were adopted. Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, speaking on the motion. Unless we have any objection from councillors, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, we will approve the Finance Committee report. Next, Legislative Affairs Committee, meeting of December eighth, two thousand and twenty. Councillor Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. There was one item on the agenda, petition one fifty, twenty. Councillors Elizabeth Walsh and Michael Kusmeric, to craft a strategic plan to address the racial equity and economic empowerment disparities through the lens of city practices and policies, including but not limited to hiring, interning, appointing, and investment in community and economic development. There was a recommendation for a proposed ordinance based on some of the concerns of some of the councillors. It was determined that that would be held in committee so that we can perhaps retool that ordinance to make it more compliant with the councillor's concerns.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the report from the Legislative Affairs Committee. Speaking on the motion. Seeing none unless there is any objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing no objection. Legislative Affairs Committee report is approved. Next, we have Orders Finance and councillors, I have been asked for suspension of the rules on all of the items that are before us. So I'd ask for someone to make a motion to suspend the rules on two forty-seven up to and including two fifty, twenty.
All moved.
I have a motion and a second for suspension of the rules on two forty-seven up to and including two fifty, twenty. We'll take this by roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Councillor Squalia.
Yay.
Councillor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
Councillor Walsh?
Yes.
Councillor Zarela?
Yes.
President Kusmeric?
Yes.
Councillor Boishman?
Yes.
Councillor Kuchar?
Yes.
Councillor Gina Tally?
Yes.
Councillor Fleming?
Yes.
Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Unanimous motion carries, and I believe the first three items here are pertaining to police, so I'm going to ask it. Chief Martino, join us. And so chief, would you like us, would you like me to read these three, or would you like to walk us through each one individually?
It's up to you, Mr. President. I can, I can go through them fairly quickly if you'd like.
If you could, that'd be wonderful.
Excellent. So the first one, forty-seven, twenty, this is a thirty-six thousand dollar grant to purchase ballistic vests for the members of the Pittsburgh Police Department. In previous years, we've relied heavily on federal funding to replace our ballistic vests, which we replace every five years. However, this year, the federal funding was reduced drastically, which made us scramble here a little bit and look for another alternative other than free cash or funding from the city to replace these valuable pieces of equipment. And we were fortunate enough to receive a thirty-six thousand dollar grant from the State JAG program that, in conjunction with another twelve thousand dollars from the federal program, will allow us to replace up to fifty vests this current year, which should be good for the next five years. Is there any questions on the ballistic grant, grant?
Move, approve?
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve two forty-seven, twenty, speaking on the motion. Seeing none, madam clerk, can we take this by unanimous consent? All right, unless there is any objection from councillors, take two forty-seven, twenty by unanimous consent. It is approved. Two forty-eight, twenty. Chief.
Two forty-eight, twenty. This is a reoccurring grant that we receive each year. This comes from the State 911 Department of Training. This grant is in the amount of forty-one thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars. These funds go to both fire and police in training for 911, specifically Pittsburgh Fire. We train their firefighters in emergency medical dispatch. And here at the Police Department, our dispatches here go through annual training for emergency dispatch use. This forty-one thousand dollars goes totally towards training for both fire and police. And like I said, this is a reoccurring grant. I'd be welcome any questions in regards to that.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve two forty-eight, twenty, speaking on the motion. Seeing none, if there are no objections, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing no objections, two forty-eight, twenty is adopted. Two forty-nine, twenty. Thank you, Chief Martino.
Thank you, Mr. President. The last grant is also a reoccurring grant that comes out of the Executive Office of Public Safety. We get this once a year. This is for traffic enforcement through the municipal safe, road safety group out of the Executive Office of Public Safety. This specific grant this year, we were awarded thirty, excuse me, thirty-six thousand six hundred and forty-two dollars. Most of that money will go towards extra enforcement. This one specifically, we would like to, we're hoping to start sending patrols out in the next week or so. We, we break this down into four, excuse me, five different deployments. We do winter and pair driving from twelve fifteen today through January thirty-first. Then we do, then we move into distracted driving early in the springtime, click at a ticket, and then speed detection throughout the city on various dates. In addition, we're also purchasing some equipment this year out of this grant. We're going to be purchasing four portable pole-mounted radar units, which should help us significantly throughout the city when it comes to speeding issues. Also, we're going to be purchasing two handheld radar units. Once again, this is thirty-six thousand dollars worth of extra deployments and equipment that is coming through aggressive grant writing, which we've been very successful here at the police station. I'd welcome any questions that come for the municipal safety grant, road safety grant.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and second, but it, councillors, if you wouldn't mind, councillor Walsh should just add a question or comment for the chief.
I, I don't have, I don't have a question. I just, I just wanted to mention that these three grants total about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and that's what the grant writer for the Police Department is, is saving the city. So I just wanted to thank the chief for that and, and to thank, I, I know that Christie works very hard on, on writing grants. I know she has some help here and there, but I, I just wanted to thank the chief for, for saving the city that money through, through the hard work of, of getting those grants.
I'm glad you brought that up councillor. Currently, we're, we're managing well over a million dollars in grants right now that come from some, some hard work when it comes to grant writing. So thank you for bringing that up.
I have a motion and second. Unless there are any further questions or comments from councillors, and unless there is any objections, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing no objections, two forty-nine, twenty is adopted. Chief, thank you very much for, for being with us this evening, and please do convey our gratitude as a body to, to Christie Fisher for, for the work that she's done on these grants.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, councillors.
Thank you. Next, we have two fifty, twenty, and I believe we're going to welcome Mary Delaney with us. Ordered that there be and hereby is transferred from within the sum of five thousand dollars, seemed to be transferred from purchasing personal services. seemed to be transferred from purchasing, uh, personal services assistant, uh, to department head and credited to purchasing, uh, personal services and overtime. And, uh, Mary, are you with us this evening?
I am, I'm here.
Wonderful. Uh, could you just walk us through, uh, two fifty, why I think it's fairly self-explanatory, but if you could just walk us through it very briefly?
Sure. Back beginning of two, of twenty twenty, which seems like yesterday, but a long, long time ago, the council approved a transfer between line items for some overtime in the purchasing department due to a, a short staff system, but also due to us trying to launch a new software program that we had. After that transfer was approved, we then had to shut down due to COVID and we didn't use those funds for overtime. And, um, so we've, we've been proceeding, uh, you know, being short-staffed in the office and on remote work and unable to do that large project. But in the meantime, we also, um, have now lost another employee as of September. And we've been quite short-staffed since then and need to play catch-up. So that's what this is. It's not a request for new money, it's a request for transfer between line items.
Questions from counselors?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve two fifty, twenty, uh, speaking on the motion. I, I'll just thank Ms. Delaney for being with us this evening and for all the hard work that she and her department have done, particularly at this time. Uh, I can't imagine what other large projects, uh, she might be working on. So I want to thank her for, uh, for everything that she's done. I have a motion and second to approve, and unless there is any objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved. Thank you, Ms. Delaney, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselors.
Next, we have, uh, ordinance, uh, two thirty-six, twenty, an ordinance amending the Fitchburg City Code, Chapter one forty-seven Sewers, incorporating amendments made in the Legislative Affairs Committee meeting on October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty and as outlined in the enclosed ordinance, reference petition two oh four, twenty. Uh, and I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And second, uh, to send it to its third and final reading, enrolled, ordained, and advertised. Speaking on the motion, uh, I believe we need to take this one, however, by roll call vote. Uh, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Squalia.
Yay.
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Counselor Zarella.
Yes.
President Kuschmerick.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
Yes.
Counselor Kucher.
Yes.
Counselor Gina Tally.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Unanimous motion carries. And lastly, two forty-five, twenty, an ordinance amending Chapter one fifty-seven entitled Streets and Sidewalks to add Article eight entitled Snow or Ice on Motor Vehicles by adding Sections one fifty-seven dash ninety-four, Duty to Remove Snow or Ice on Motor Vehicles, and one fifty-seven ninety-five, Sanctions as outlined in the enclosed ordinance, reference petition zero zero eight, twenty, final reading.
Final reading.
Final reading, enrolled, ordained, and advertised.
Motion and second, uh, is made to send five, twenty, to its third and final reading, enrolled, ordained, and advertised, we'll take this by roll call, uh, vote, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Squalia.
Yay.
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Yes.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Counselor Zarella.
Yes.
President Kuschmerick.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
Yes.
Counselor Kucher.
Yes.
Counselor Gina Tally.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
And Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
That is unanimous.
It is unanimous, but motion carries, that completes the agenda for this evening. Uh, I want to wish everyone a safe and happy holiday season, regardless of what holiday you may be celebrating. I hope that you stay safe, stay warm, uh, and, uh, and observe COVID-nineteen recommendations as ordered by, uh, the, the mayor and, uh, and the governor. Uh, with that, I have a motion and second to adjourn. Uh, unless there is any objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. We adjourned, thank you, counselors, good evening, everyone.